How's Steve Williams doing? How's Chief Williams doing?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the full Antonia Board of Alderman meeting for November 20th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag.
Oh, Trish, you did a great job on that.
Okay, ready? Alderman King. Alderman Kirar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Nat.
Here.
Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Who's the host?
Boy, what a beautiful picture.
Alderman Mellow. Alderman Rivers.
Yeah.
Alderman Mammon.
Here.
Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Duranty.
Six, seven, eight. Wait, the host disabled our videos.
I have eleven. Do you have eleven? Eleven and three.
Yes.
Present three.
Yep, John, you're the host. It says the the videos are disabled.
We're disabled.
Yeah, we're locked. I'm like locked out.
All right, you got them back.
Okay.
I'll note that that was our worst.
My computer won't work out here. I gotta be in here.
I gotta go.
It's too hard to make it not work.
Rhonda, you're not muted, Rhonda.
Rhonda, you're not muted.
It's all right. We like to hear from her.
All right, that was our worst ever pledge. I just wanted to know.
I know, right?
I mean, we've had some bad ones. We've had some bad ones. That was like for the ages really, really bad.
Well, we don't have to worry about that. You know what I think? I think we should. I think we should pray before we say the pledge.
All right, we have the minutes for approval from the October 14th, 2025 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Public session. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? Make yourself known. Anyone from the public?
Can I speak?
Oh.
Uh, this is Nancy, Monica Marini, uh, nine Dem C four, Antonia, Connecticut. Uh, I so I'm hoping that the city will give the rec board a secretary to take minutes. I think that that is too important of a meeting to not have minutes and to not have a secretary taking minutes and requiring that the board do it. I also would ask that the meetings get recorded.
What do you need?
And I say the same for the school building committee. I know the school building committee does have a secretary, but I would ask that it get reported or not reported. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other speakers from the public who wish to address the board? Any other speakers?
Gosh, Pat Henry would like to speak.
Hi, Pat.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Pat.
Hey, Pat.
Pat Henry, sixteen Harris Road, Antonia. I'm wearing my American Legion hat, not actually, but as I'm speaking. I just want to thank the mayor, Mayor David S. Cassetti, for all his support these past twelve years. He's been a great advocate for our organization. Anything we wanted to do, I just need to walk into his office and say, hey, mayor, the Legion, he says yes. I said, I don't even, I didn't tell you what I want yet. And he would say, yes. He's a great advocate for us, a supporter, and we're really going to miss you, mayor. Take care. God bless. Godspeed.
Thank you.
Henry out.
Uh, any other, uh, members of the public who wish to address the board? Any other members of the public? Last call for public session. Seeing none, we'll close public session, move on to public official session, kicked off as always by Mayor Cassetti. Hit it.
Good evening, everyone. President Stewart. Members of the Board of Aldermen, residents in the great city of Antonia. I want to start by saying how deeply honored and grateful I am to have served as your mayor for the past twelve years. Being entrusted with this responsibility for six terms, the second longest in Antonia's history, has been a privilege of my lifetime. I want to especially thank President Stewart, this board, and all the boards I have had the honor to work with. I sincerely wish the new administration success because when Antonia succeeds, we all succeed. To my family, thank you. You've stood by me through every long night, every difficult decision and every challenge that came with this job. You've sacrificed so much for me to serve this city, and I love you for that. To my immediate staff, especially John Marini, brilliant individual, Corporation Council, and Sheila O'Malley, my project and grants administrator, and to Anna Rodriguez and Christina Molina, and our latest addition, Mr. Joe Yawman. Thank you for your dedication and teamwork throughout the years. To all city staff for your dedication and service together, we rebuilt neighborhoods, attracted new businesses, cleaned up blight, and restored pride to our community. I leave office with no regrets, only gratitude. Gratitude for the chance to serve, to make a difference, and to work alongside so many good people who care about Antonia as deeply as I do. While this chapter is closing, my commitment to Antonia isn't ending. I'm still your neighbor, your friend, and someone who will always fight for this city's future. I have faith that Antonia's best days are still ahead because its people are strong, resilient, and full of heart. So tonight, I want to thank every person who believed in me and the vision we shared. Thank you for letting me serve you. Thank you for believing in what Antonia could be, and thank you for making these twelve years the greatest honor of my life. I think we can all be proud for what we have accomplished. A vibrant downtown, new apartments, new restaurants, new businesses, roads paved, parks renovated, new police station, senior center, Riverwalk Extension, millions and millions, thanks to Sheila O'Malley and of, uh, and the new project at SHW, new sidewalks, and the list is very long. I believe I left Antonia a better place than when I found it. May God bless you all. May God continue to bless the great city of Antonia. See you later.
Great.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, much appreciated. Uh, I'm gonna make a quick comment. I know you don't take questions, but I'll make a comment. You couldn't find two more different people than myself and David S. Cassetti, uh, on the surface. However, we did have a common bond, and that was a love for the Big Valley TV show. And I just want to say, I want to say we watched, I watched the Battle of Mineral Springs, season four, episode twenty-one. And with Jack Albertson.
Oh, yeah.
The exact opposite of Antonia. That's all I'll say, right? So, good times. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Josh. I checked. I went in there because I heard music on.
Love you, Dad. Great job.
Chicago, you're not on mute.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome job, mayor.
Thank you, guys. Love yous all.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you did. It's been great.
All right, next up, we have, uh, someone with an incredible vision for the future, probably fueled by his love for sci-fi and horror. Corporation Council, John Marini.
President Stewart, members of the board, uh, number one, I want to start by thanking Mayor Cassetti for being an amazing leader, uh, for the last twelve years and helping recharge Antonia, right? I think that's, uh, sums it up. Uh, but thank you, mayor, uh, for everything.
John, thank you for everything you've done. You're a remarkable individual.
And, you know, we, nothing can be done without a team, um, but of course, there's no team without a leader. America City played that role and played that role extremely well, and the proof is in the results. Um, there's a lot of other things, uh, before I get to that, I want to point out that Josh will be playing those guitars in the grand finale at the end of this meeting. So if anyone were to think about logging off early, you know, I, they, they really shouldn't. Um, my kids just turned sixteen years old. You know, I have twin boys.
Amazing.
And it's been that long, uh, that I've been, uh, being a part of the progress of the city of Antonia. I first came onto the Board of Aldermen, um, days after they were born in two thousand and nine. Um, and since that time, there's been a lot of change. When I started, there were some big challenges that we were facing, the, the whole city was facing. Um, whether it be copper and brass and what would become of that sixty acres, whether it be our downtown, right, where development seemed stalled, whether it be the future of Pulaski Highway, uh, one of the last open spaces in the city, uh, a potential for our school system, whether it be Olson Drive, right, the demolition was occurring, what was going to happen next? And here we are, uh, sixteen years later.
Wow.
And this administration, from the mayor to every version of this board, has solved those problems. And, and now we take a look at copper and brass, the buildings are coming down, and there's a potential, there's now a future. Take a look at Pulaski Highway, there's going to be a new middle school on that property. And take a look at the downtown, it's flourishing. And on top of that private investment, you have a new police station, a new senior center, um, and Olson Drive finally put into a position where a, a future can be built. And even beyond that, you know, from, from Nolan Field to Wyclie Avenue, uh, and so much more. So every member of this board, every member sitting right here for the last twelve years, um, and every member, every, every iteration of this board for the last twelve years has allowed us to get to that point. But it's really important to understand that every member of this board for the twelve years before that also helped us get to that point and the twelve years before that. It's a foundation that's laid by one administration, and it's carried on by the next administration. And that's the way it is, and it's the way that it should be. And so while there's a lot of thanks to be given for what we've done here in this administration, we need to extend it back, and we need to be excited about looking forward. Uh, the next administration gets their chance to leave their mark. Um, and we, and I, the mayor, uh, stated it at, at the beginning, and I want to echo that. We are here to support them, to support Antonia, the residents in the future. Their vision may be slightly different, maybe very different, but it doesn't matter. It builds that next layer in the foundation, um, that next step is taken to recharge Antonia. And in the next twelve years, next sixteen years, I, I think when we look back, we're going to see the, the real result of, of every administration paving that way forward. Um, I do really want to give thanks to obviously this board, but also the staff that I've worked with along the way. Um, I want to give thanks to the employees of the city of Antonia, um, who often go unrecognized for what they do, uh, to the unions that really play a big part in allowing it all to happen and to making sure it happens in a fair and just way. It's been a pleasure working, uh, with everyone. And most of all, a big, big thank you to the residents who fuel everything. Without the support of the residents, there could be no Antonia Recharged, there could be no city of Antonia. And so a big thanks to the residents for the support over the last twelve years here, uh, sixteen years since I started. Um, and looking forward, of course, that's what matters at the end of the day, uh, the residents. I do want to cap off, um, there's a lot of success to, to, to talk about. I, I think it can be seen. Uh, one success that we do want to highlight, um, about eleven years ago, we started a new blight remediation program, the Godzilla of Blight, uh, programs, in fact. And I think you've seen a lot of the impact out there in the field in terms of what it's been doing to clean up blight. But I do want to highlight that the revenue brought in from this program. And this was revenue mostly brought in from banks, okay, and from out of town landlords, right? You're not talking about a lot of penalties being incurred by residents. A lot of these fees are paid off when properties change hands, and banks and, uh, property management companies have to step in and finally, uh, pay their due. Over the last eleven years, we've collected a total of over two point four million dollars through this program that has helped us fund city operations and keep taxes low. And of course, if you take a look at that mill rate, um, there are so many efforts of this board, putting their neck on the line, being creative, and truly, uh, truly living up to the promises, right? This mill rate, uh, is lower than it was twelve years ago, and actual taxes paid are very similar, even given, uh, even given, uh, reval, even given with the rise in property values that we've seen all over Connecticut. But it's not just about taxes, it's about progress, and I think that's where this board, every member of this board and this administration should hold their head up high and be very proud, uh, because the Antonia Recharge was more than just a slogan. Uh, it was, um, it was an actuality, uh, the results speak for themselves. So with that, thank you. Look forward to, uh, supporting our new officials um, and really excited to see where they take Antonia.
Thank you, John. Great job.
John, yeah, nice job, John.
John Maloney, can you mute, please?
All right, uh, next up, we will go to our economic development guru, Sheila O'Malley.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. I, I can promise you, I'm not going to be as eloquent and never can be as eloquent as our Operation Council, John Marini, didn't really prepare anything of that nature, but I do want to second everything he said. It's been an enormous honor and privilege to have worked for Mayor Cassetti and this board and, and every board we've had in the last twelve years. Um, and thank you to the department heads and the city staff and, and everyone who have worked hard, uh, these past twelve years to, to recharge Antonia. Um, it's been, again, an honor and a privilege for me, so I thank, I thank Mayor Cassetti for that from the bottom of my heart. He has a, he has a great heart and truly loves Antonia and the residents. It didn't have anything to do with writing that, the mayor's speech, because that was mentioned twice in there. So, uh, for me, um, I do want to announce that, um, on Monday, we received, uh, news that the city, um, we had put in a, a grant for, um, for community connectivity. It's called the Community Connectivity Grant from the DOT, and we did receive seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and that's part of the mayor's vision to.
Fade it out.
You're breaking up. Part of the mayor's vision is where we left off.
Can you hear me? I'm driving. I apologize. I am coming from another meeting. Are we there?
Yeah, it's back. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Sheila. Part of the mayor's vision.
Sorry, I apologize. Still in my car. Yeah, I'm so very sorry. I, I, that's why you're not seeing me because I'm in my car. Um, and so, uh, I don't know how much you heard or didn't hear, but so eight hundred thousand dollars approximately to, um, to do more sidewalk work in the, in the area of the middle school, and that's, that's a that is, uh, a great, a great, um, grant we just received, so I just wanted to update everybody on that. Um, and, uh, you know, I'll, I'll just leave it at that, I guess, for now. There's, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of projects in progress, as you know, Olson Drive, with the, um, drainage being put in, that the field will be ready in twenty twenty-five to be installed up to the weather and the developer moving forward with that, but paving of the parking areas begin this year. Um, and, uh, the retaining walls are being installed. Um, I guess, I guess that's it. I, I will leave it at that, uh, for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a full list of.
Sheila.
Go ahead, John.
If I may interject about Olson Drive, about Olson Drive, so that everybody understands this. When they built them apartments back in the mid to early sixties, there was no DEEP, there was no EPA, and there's a lot of contaminants there. It took us a lot of time, a lot of time, because people were wondering why it's taking so long to do that project. And they're right, but they're, environmentally, it was contaminated, and it needed to be cleaned up, and it took a lot of time to do that. It took years, and people should really understand that.
Yes.
It's gonna all happen. This is gonna happen, all right? John Gettys is into this. But just the cleanup, because of, of EPA and DEP standards are so high for environmental cleanup, uh, that's why it took so long. All right, and, and people really understand that, because I've seen a lot of comments, I didn't comment anymore because why's it taking so long? Well, that's the reason why, because of the contamination that was in that property. So people should understand that. That's what the problem was.
Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, that. Thank you.
And thank you, Sheila, for everything you've done. You are an amazing, uh, specialist.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks, John. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right, we will move on to the chief operating officer, the COO for his update.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Um, on a personal note, I'd just like to say thank you to all of you, everybody I've served with, everybody I've served under, um, everybody I've volunteered with over the years. Uh, thank you for all the hard work and dedication over the years. So thank you, everybody. Um, on a personal note, I, I had a very productive meeting with the mayor-elect this morning. Uh, I see member, many members of the new board. I look forward to working with you, uh, establishing a relationship and continuing the progress, uh, for our great city. Um, a couple operational notes, um, it's been a bit, so I'll just kind of go through. No one's moving ahead. Um, the turfing is all done. Uh, there's one game left to be played, uh, up there on Thanksgiving. We had a meeting up there earlier this week to talk about security and other issues, and I, we're looking good, um, for getting that game off without a hitch, hopefully. Knock on wood. Uh, all the Halloween events, uh, throughout the city went out, went forward without any issue. Um, the election had no major issues. Um, on one, one thing I did want to mention, um, is after many years, our wonderful director of the nature center has chosen to retire, so I just wanted to say thank you to Allison and wish her well. Uh, a lot of hard work and a lot of time that she's put in up there, making the nature center everything it could be. Um, I hope you all join me in saying thank you. So, um, that's really all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me other than that. Look forward to working with everybody, and thank you.
Any questions for Joe from the Alderman?
Well, thank you, Joe, for all your, uh, your service time as well.
Yep, thank you, Joe, and good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, next we'll move on to, uh, chief of police, Wayne Williams.
Good evening. So I had a whole bunch of stuff to update John tonight, but I've decided I'm just going to update John a couple things. Uh, I wanted to let you know that, um, our canine officer and his canine Ripley, uh, uh, Ripley are, um, due to graduate on Jan, on December eighth, I'm sorry, December eighth, and join back into the, uh, the police force. Um, as an example of what this community can do and how quickly it can do it, we recently sent out a fundraiser request on social media, um, for a new ballistic vest for the dog. And, uh, within days, it was fully funded. They had expected, uh, a ten or twenty percent contribution, and I let you know that, uh, it was well over a hundred percent was contributed, so, uh, very much, uh, appreciated. I also remind you, while everybody's still in that giving mood, that, uh, tomorrow, uh, from eleven thirty to five at Target will be our Thanksgiving food drive. Uh, we do this every year. This is run, um, by multiple officers here, but Mike Berry, our school resource officer at the high school, takes the lead on this every year, uh, for Thanksgiving and for our Christmas food drive, where he partners up with Fitzpatrick's. So that drive is tomorrow at Target from eleven thirty to five. Please feel free to stop down, say, say hello to the officers, and do some shopping to help us fill our Jeeps. Um, Mayor, as your chief of police, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude, um, to you, to the members of this Board of Aldermen. Uh, your support has helped us strengthen public safety, uh, improve our equipment and training, ensure that the officers here can serve this city with professionalism and pride. You have stood behind the men and women of this department. You gave them a new home, and we never tried to take that for granted. I've spent the last thirty-six years of my life policing this city. I do call it a home. Uh, and the last five or so of those years have been trying times for law enforcement, but this administration and this community have stood shoulder to shoulder with our officers, and I appreciate the support. I look forward to working with the incoming administration and their continued support for the officers that proudly wear the Antonia patch on their sleeves. On behalf of the entire police department, thank you, Mayor Cassetti. Thank you to this Board of Aldermen, all the city staff for your partnership, your assistance and your commitment to making this city safer and stronger. Uh, I wish every one of you the best as you move on into the next chapter of your lives, and you get to get some rest. Uh, and I look forward to seeing you around town. So I just wanted to know, let you know that I appreciate it very much, and thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right, and lastly, in our, uh, public official session, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph Tabacco.
Good evening, President Stewart. Um, I have to say, uh, Chief Williams, you, you took a lot from me. I just wanted to also share. I do have some highlights, uh, about the school system. Um, I could tell you that we have our parent teacher conferences. I could tell you about roundtables, but I'd rather tell you that Mayor Cassetti and this Board of Aldermen, I appreciate all the support for the Board of Ed, for the students of Antonia. You've made our academic program stronger. You've made our building safer. The collaboration between the city and the Board of Education has never been better. I know with the next administration will transition to do the same, but I can't say thank you enough for the support that has been provided to our students, and I look forward to the, to the years ahead, because it should only get better, because we do have that strong foundation, all because of the men and women on the Board of Aldermen and Mayor Cassetti, greatly appreciated. Uh, I, I can't say enough. It's, it's a lot of thank yous, and, um, like Wayne, but like, uh, Chief said, we'll see you around. I know the highlight of what I want to share is that on our new field, we'll be playing our very first homecoming. I mean, our very first Thanksgiving Day football game on a brand new field. I know I'll see many of you. I just want to say, uh, thanks and e- excitement for the future as well. So once again, thank you, Mayor Cassetti. Thank you, every Alderman that's on, and I wish you all the best in the future as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, so ends, uh, public official session. We'll move on to, uh, reports. We have, I'll start with the financial reports. Uh, the finance committee. Hit it, somebody.
Make a motion to, uh, pay all bills, if deemed correct.
I second it.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mammon, second by Janetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, secondly, we have the boat recommendations from the municipal report of the boat meeting of, uh, November third.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mammon, second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And lastly, we have, um, two, two months worth of requests for refunds. We've got October, November, October. Um, these are, if found to be correct, um, October refund amount, eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents. eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents and November four hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Motion by Rivers and second by Mammon uh to approve those. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously again. Uh, monthly reports, as usual, we got a slew of reports from the department heads. Too many to list, but thank you to to all of them for their work and for updating us on uh all their activities. So I'm just seeking a a motion to place those staff reports on file.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mammon, second by Not. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to accents and claims. We have two uh claim number ten twenty-five, ten eighty-two and ten twenty-five, ten eighty-three, both Moore O'Brien and Fody Atlaw versus City of Ansonia regarding personal injuries.
Motion to refer to.
To court, corporate counsel?
Second.
Motion to refer to counsel by Tar, second by Mammon. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Communications, uh we have two communications. Uh, the first one is from uh Van Lefkaditis. This was a request uh to waive additional P and Z fees. Um, and I just want to note that um in the communication, he he mentions that they paid the fee of fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, everything was on time. There were some tweaks made. I did talk to the Planning and Zoning Chair who uh also recommended that we waive and not second uh double charge for for the same thing again. So he's just looking to have that secondary uh waiver.
Second.
Motion to waive by Cassetti, second by Mammon. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second one, um Attorney Marini mentioned this uh regarding the Godzilla of Blight program. There's a report from uh Rhonda Perini. Total amount collected from Blight uh from from the fiscal year uh twenty sixteen through October twenty twenty-five. And the amount is two million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy and sixty-one cents. I think just um, I don't think we need to do any approval, just uh um, accept that and
Motion to accept.
Can we applaud it?
Yeah, motion to accept and applaud by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Mammon. All in favor? All right, no opposed, I'm sure. Uh, we have uh three, three appointments. Um first one is uh to the Parks and Rec Board. This is a replacement uh for the um Board of Ed. Resignation recently from Tom Brockett. This is um to to appoint John Mahalco of Twenty-Two Colane as the Board of Education and Coach Representative. Uh, term to expire six thirty, twenty thirty.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Lovinsky. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your service.
You, thank you.
Second uh nominee from the Mayor Sports Advisory Panel to the Parks and Rec. This is, these are three-year terms. Um, this was discussed last month. Um, motion to appoint Linda Williams of Two Dogwood Drive, the, who's the softball head coach representative with a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Lovinsky. All in favor? Opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed Mammon. Uh, motion carries. Uh, third appointment, Historical Commission, two-year term. Uh, the nominee is John Colleen of eighty-six Highland Avenue, term to expire eleven thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Motion by Mammon, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up, we have uh our last Key to the City uh presentation. Um, this was my nomination. Uh, and the nominee tonight is Trish Bruder. It was on this call. And uh in conjunction with Trish, I I put together a little um blurb, in case you know, don't know anything about her or for the public. Uh, I will say I I took some liberties with it, but I got some facts and then kind of went haywire with it from there, but here we go. Trish Bruder, Key to the City Honoree. So uh since nineteen ninety-nine, when the, when the Board of Aldermen voted to make it a permanent, her permanent job, Trish has served faithfully as as the permanent uh Secretary uh of the Board of Aldermen. And she said she tried to leave a couple times, but it never worked out. Usually because um, well, at least when I was the president, I just ignored her when she said that. Yeah, so then reflecting on this, I told myself, wow, she's been at this for twenty-five years, but then I discovered in talking with her, but her history goes whack way further than this. Uh, she actually started uh with the city ten years earlier in the middle of uh Tom Clifford's term. Uh, and I was actually still in high school. This was nineteen eighty-nine. She took the minutes for lots of boards throughout the years, the Board of Education. Uh, when she said Ruth Feinberg Connors was the Superintendent, the Police Commission, when Anne Pitney was the Chair, uh Arms. She said that uh Bill Velms was the first Board of Aldermen President that she worked for. Uh, of course, this was her first president because I highly suspect her favorite president is reading the citation right now. This was all so long ago that they actually tapped out the minutes on a typewriter back then. Trish also became an Alderman. Trish also became an Alderman in the early nineties for the Sixth Ward. Uh, she later moved out of Ansonia, at which point, you guessed it, uh she started taking the minutes again. Uh, another fun fact, Trish was Ansonia's representative to the NV cog and served as their treasurer in the late eighties and early nineties. And I think this is significant, if you believe in coming full circle, because currently, in addition to all she's done for the city, she's also the Executive Administrative Clerk for the NV cog, where she oversees administrative support, scheduling and clerical work for all their boards and their committees.
Lots of minutes.
Yeah, lots of
A worker, real good worker.
So thank you, Trish. You're so very deserving of being tonight's uh Key to the City recipient. It's been an honor. Very, very easy to work with you. Uh, Trish would always send me the draft of the minutes before they got uh to review, before they got um posted to the city. I'd always smile when I was reading them because they ended every single time with the same phrase. What is it, Trish?
For your reading pleasure.
I would laugh because I was like, man, I just lived that meeting. I hardly need to go reading it about it now, but uh anyhow. Um, and I asked Trish about her favorite meetings and she very enthusiastically said the four-hour ones.
The four-hour ones and and my absolute favorite ones were the ones about the proposed trash burning plant back in the nineties.
Yeah.
Hours and hours and hours and hours.
Feel the deja vu, Trish?
I do.
Full circle moment.
Thank you, Trish.
For this honor. Thank you for recognizing me. I really and truly appreciate it. I I and and I will tell you that this particular board has been very exciting to to work with because you you did so much. You did so much. Just incredible. So there was never a dull moment. There was never a boring meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. From from my comrades for all these late nights. We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, now we'll move on from Keys of the City to uh resignations. Uh, we have three resignations tonight. Uh, first one, Fair Housing Officer Anna Rodriguez.
Motion. Send her a nice letter.
Second. Steady, you're gonna send a letter on your last meeting? Send him a letter. Motion by Cassetti. Who was it? Who's the second on that?
Mammon.
Second or uh Mammon. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you for your service. Second uh resignation was from uh the Conservation Commission, Frank Pergola.
Motion to accept, send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion by Mammon, second by Cassetti. All in favor? All right, motion carries. And third one, the zoning, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Emily Quinn.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mammon and second by Cassetti again. All in favor? All right, motion carries unanimously. We have one resolution. This was um this is a uh grant that came in, I believe, uh from the ECD, two hundred thousand dollars, and this is uh to undertake the Feral Property assessment. Um, and this is just to to process it.
Motion to accept.
Correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I just if if anyone has any questions, I can answer that. But yeah, this is just a a formality required to accept the grant on behalf of the city.
Make a motion to accept the grant.
Motion by Mammon to accept and second by Not. All in favor?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right, motion carries. Uh, we have no ordinances tonight. We have a couple things under New Business. Uh, first uh item, uh approval to display the mayor's painting in the City Hall Lobby. Think this is a, is a formality. I believe there's a painting in of every uh former mayor in the lobby, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Mammon.
Thanks, Tony.
Uh, and that's already, that painting is already in existence. That's not Yeah.
Gosh, we were gonna ask you to paint it if it wasn't done.
There you go.
That'd be a good one.
Stick, people.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Other item under uh New Business is, we talked about, actually, we talked about it a little bit in a previous meeting, but um this, the decision was made to uh go with the option uh for the down engine at Arms and a a recommendation or approval for the engine replacement, not the, not the full remount. Motion to approve by Rivers.
Second.
Second by, who is that?
Mammon.
Mammon. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed?
Should have got a new one.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Um, that's the the most, um, like I said, then we have old business. We have four items. Um, a bunch of these are related. Uh, number one is O and G Industries, Inc. Uh, this is the asphalt invoice that was in your packet. Does someone want to speak to this?
No, it's good to go. Make a motion to accept.
Okay, motion to accept by Cassetti. Second by Not. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, two and three are related. Approval for additional sidewalk work and approval for further paving work. Um
Motion.
Motion by Not, who's
Second.
Second by Mammon.
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor? Any opposed?
It's a lot of word work. Very good.
Get it done, Mayor. Get it done.
Number four, appeal of the, to the sewer, notice of sewer charge. Uh, and there were two, two names, um Lineski, ninety-three Jackson Street and Mr. Phipps on twenty-seven Johnson Street. John, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so this is unfinished business. Uh, these two appeals were simply not acted on. They came through, um but there was no decision made by the board. Uh, really simply stated, um because of the actions of the board to set a new sewer rate before the sale to Aquarian. Uh, the ratepayers did have the opportunity to file an appeal. Um, that was included in the notices. Uh, we did have two appeals and those two appeals um have been with you since they were filed and are now on the agenda. Um, there is an ability to move forward, uh if you're the right, if you're one of these ratepayers, um and it's approved. Um, they would be able to avail themselves of um of a modified rate set by this board, whether it be the original rate or something in between. Um, if they disagree with the decision, whether it was a simple no or whether it was uh revising the rate to something in between, they would be able to, at the point of your decision, um to take it to the uh Superior Court, to take your appeal to the next level. However, there needs to be an action by your board in order for them to be able to decide whether to move forward or not. So we do need to have a decision on those appeals.
What's your recommendation?
Um, you could, uh, the merits of the appeals are expressed um within the letters and it's really, you know, subject to your discretion.
Do you have a a thoughts on that, though? I mean, I I know that the sentiment behind it was that um there's a a distinct difference between uh resident, occupied, um dual families and um you know, people renting their houses out to to multiple families. And that was, that was sort of the distinction that was being drawn, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know what what the appetite of the board is um for this.
How would this play out if we don't do anything?
Or if there's nothing, they could either accept the denial or they could take that denial and appeal to the a higher level, which is of course the Superior Court.
Well, then let's deny it.
Let's deny it.
Okay.
Motion to deny.
So that's both of, all of them or or specify which one you
How do you pick and choose who to go? Yeah, it's hard to
Let's let them choose.
Let the courts handle it.
Okay, we just need a motion on the record.
I made the motion. I second it.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Not. Any further discussion or questions on this? The the letters were in your packet. This is, this does go back along, all the way a couple of years. No discussion? All right, all in favor? Opposed. Extensions.
Opposed, Ken.
One opposed, King. All right, the motion to deny is uh goes through. That's it for old business, although there is one piece of old business that we really haven't discussed. Well, we've kind of just bandied it around, but we haven't really discussed. It's not on the agenda, but this was the the concept of the Joe Genetti Memorial Urinal. Put Noel on field. I know he's really been asking about it. Um, now that he's out of the tire business, I don't know, we probably won't do anything with it, Joe, but
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I wanted to mention that, you know, we, every time I pee up there, I'll think about you. Um, at least, right? It's been good. Uh, so we'll just skip that one since not on the agenda anyways. Um, so
I'll contribute, I'll contribute to the plaque for that above the uh set space if you want. Appreciate you, Joe.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so so ends uh regular session.
Motion to go into executive session. God bless you, whoever sneezed.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar to go into executive session. John, who do we need? We have two items, uh both Blight Leans.
Because it's Blight, we'll need beyond our usual um staff, our uh Blight Enforcement, uh Land Use Department Director.
Rhonda?
Rhonda Pre.
Okay, thank you.
He's here.
Okay. Let's go. Be missed up.
Be missed out. Eight minds.
Joe Cassetti's already there.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion to come out of executive session by Rivers, second by Mammon. Uh, all in favor? All right, in executive session, we discussed two items, uh one, uh one A and one B. We'll take them in order. And on the issue of Blight Lean, uh A fifty-three Lock Street, what's your pleasure?
Like to make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Motion to dis, to proceed as discussed uh by Tar, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the other one was one B. Uh, Blight Leans, one forty-three South Cliff Street. How'd you like to proceed?
Motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Motion to proceed as discussed by Tar, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Alright, motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the end of our agenda. I just wanted to quickly, um, thank everyone. Um, from the public, from, uh, the city, uh, all the, all the, um. Employees and particularly our board, uh, past, uh, and present. Uh, good luck to those in the future, but I, I, as the president for several years now. Um, I, I feel like, uh, you get a, have a special relationship with the people on the board. You ask people to do stuff. And lo and behold, they do things, uh, way above and beyond what they're supposed to add, you know, uh, acting on other boards. Um, acting on commissions, um, doing extra things. So I have a great appreciation for, you know, all thirteen of you, uh, as well as everyone that's ever served, um, you know, under me. Um, because, uh, you know, I can go one-to-one and, and say things, so I just want to say. I very much appreciate that. I also appreciate, uh, the faith that you guys have had in me, voting me in as president as well, so. Uh, it's been a pleasure and thank you and, uh, good luck to everybody.
Josh, you've always done a fine job of, uh. Done a good job refereeing this board when, uh, you know, a lot of us were unruly and you did, you did a hell of a job. Keeping control, you were always prepared and, you know, you were the, you, you were the man for the job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you did.
Good man.
Uh, motion to codify the Mammon rule forever?
Let's go.
Rivers, hit it!
Okay, before I hit it, I have to say this. I have enjoyed working with this board. It's been a pleasure and I could not. Go out without saying, me and my partner started this together. Joe Jamin.
Oh, yeah.
And. I will miss him, but he's a cool now, so I can still see him. But I want to thank everybody. It was a privilege and it was my honor to serve for four terms. With you guys and pass Alderman. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rivers to adjourn, second by Tar. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Thanks.
Thanks, Trish.